Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, colleagues in council, city manager, invited guests, and all others. I want to thank the members of the school board for joining us today. I want to first recognize our chairman, Dr. Patillo, our vice chair, Ms. Atkinson, all other council, excuse me, school board members. Of course, recognize Dr. Bracy, our superintendent, and Mr. Falk. And now, if we could, call the roll for the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barnes. Mr. Hugo.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke. Mr. Moody.
Here.
Mr. Tillage.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. At this time, I want to welcome you all on behalf of the council. Really excited about the opportunity to sit down and have a conversation about these superintendents' estimate of needs. And I know that they're gonna, I know they're gonna, so I'm gonna turn it over now to Chair of the school board, Dr. Patillo.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Stewart, may I call the roll for the school board?
Ms. Atkinson.
Here.
Mrs. Boone.
Yes, here.
Mrs. Retrell.
Here.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mrs. Schumay.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas. Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Dr. Patillo.
Here. Thank you so much. And I would like to state that Dr. Cotton, he's unable to make it. He was actually in a car accident, so he's home with his brain. We keep him in our prayers while he's home.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I would like to add that Ms. Thomas.
President.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and city council members. I want to thank you for the invitation to come and join you this evening for the meeting. As we know, ongoing dialogue and continued collaboration between our two parties are paramount for our city's success. Meetings like tonight are entryways to that joint effort. It is our desire as a board to hold additional meetings throughout the year between the two bodies to enhance our communication and continue partnership. As Chairman of the school board, I have the great privilege of introducing tonight Dr. Eli Bracy III, our Division Superintendent, as well as Mr. Theodore Falk, our Chief Financial Officer, as they present the 2024-2025 Superintendent's Estimate of Needs. Thursday at our regular school board meeting, we heard this presentation firsthand. I will share Dr. Bracy and his team have done a stellar job of identifying the needs we have here in our division and outlining a pathway forward. I look forward to the conversation that will come from tonight's presentation. At this time, I will turn the floor to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council, and Ms. Terry. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight before you to present our 2024-2025 Estimate of Needs. As always, unfortunate, as Dr. Patillo mentioned, to have my CFO, COFalk, with us. And at this time, I will defer to him to begin our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, city council members, as well as Ms. Terry. We stand before you tonight to give you information regarding the superintendent's estimate of needs for FY 2024-25. The first thing I wanted to do is give you an overview of kind of how our operating budget is contained and established. Our operating budget consists of five funds. You see those on the screen. I'll go through those in a minute. The largest and the heart of our budget is our general fund, which encompasses about 78% of those five operating budgets. That is where we have the majority of our operating from day-to-day, our schools, our operations, transportation, any of our instructional areas. Secondly, in order of percentage, is our risk management fund. That particular fund manages all of our health insurance, our risk management activities such as property and casualty insurance, and workers' comp. Next, you will see our grants fund at 8% of the budget. That is our federal, state, local, other fund, other grants that have been awarded to the school division that we administer based on the requirements from the grantor. Number four is our cafeteria fund. That is an enterprise fund that is basically used just for food service. It's a self-supporting fund that runs all of our food services, operations in the schools. And then, last but not least, is our textbook fund, which does exactly what it says. It manages all the funding for all of our textbook purchases across the school division, and that's 1% of our budget. So when you look at all the total funds for all five of those funds, our total there is $269.3 million. Our general fund, as we said, is about 78%. That's $210 million. The risk management fund is about $23.6 million. The textbook fund is $2 million. Cafeteria fund is $11.2 million. And then, our grants fund, and those recurring grants, $22.5 million, to make a grand total of $269.3 million. So when we look at our general fund budget, which is, again, the heart of our budget, that is where we'll focus the majority of this presentation tonight. If you look at our general fund in FY 2223, or 2324, it was about $190.3 million. Our proposed budget tonight for 2425 is $210 million, which is a difference of about $19.7 million. This proposal included all of our feedback that we received from our school board members, from our community, our students, our parents, our staff, and those things that help us move our division forward from an instructional basis to make sure we have quality instructional programs, to ensure that we're using the current, most current technology standards, as well as enhancing student achievement and student support. So you will see that as Dr. Bracy goes through some of those items that are included in our budget tonight. We did our due diligence to create a budget of need, what the school division's needs are, and we wanted to encompass it in this budget in areas where we had to have upgrades, areas where we had to have additions, areas where we had to make modifications to keep up with the changing needs in our educational environment. This budget is based on the governor's introduced bionium budget, and I want to make that clear because that's the only budget that we have currently that has been introduced that we can kind of look at and make some decisions about. This is the first year of his budget, which is a re-benchmarking year. Re-benchmarking means that they take all of the estimates and the costs within the budget, and the state calculates and refines them to make sure that they're using current costs when they make their revenue estimates. So this is the first year of a re-benchmarking year. Normally, there is a lot of money in that first year of a re-benchmarking year. With the governor's budget, we didn't see that this time. Not sure exactly why, but a lot of things that have been done in the past were not included in the same way in the governor's budget this time. In that budget, to re-benchmark, they update average daily membership, which that's one of the key components to a school budget. Your average daily membership determines how much money you receive based on the number of students that you have. Sales tax estimates are updated every year as well because sales tax is a big component of school funding. And then lottery revenue also contributes to school funding because the state funds many programs with lottery proceeds for schools. One other facet that you will see this year is that our local composite index, which is called the ability for the locality to pay, decreased from .2413 to .2369. In a nutshell, that means that, taking apples to apples from year to year, we would receive more funding from the state in regards since our local composite index went down or was Some other things in the governor's introduction, bionium budget. He added funding for one-time 1% bonus, and I want to make that clear, bonus for SOQ-funded positions as of July 1, 2024. There was no raise within the governor's introduced budget. And again, only for SOQ positions, as I've shared with this body and for the benefit of those at home. SOQ stands for Standards of Quality, which means they're the minimum standards that the state says you have to fund. They fund at the minimum standards, but there's no way that you could operate a school division under the minimum standards that are under the state's budget. For example, in SOQ, there is an allocation of two assistant principals that are funded at the elementary level. So if we funded our budget and had two assistant principals, we would nowhere near be able to run schools that way. So that gives you an example of what SOQ funding is versus the reality. And then, lastly, last year, the, or in this fiscal year, FY 2324, the state eliminated the sales tax for grocery and for personal hygiene products. And because they did that, a part of that sales tax would not come to schools. So they held schools harmless in FY 2324 for that elimination of the grocery, the grocery and personal hygiene tax. They did not, or the governor did not include a whole harmless provision in his budget for FY 2425. So that meant we would lose that whole harmless, or that sales tax funding that we would, that we received this year because they held it harmless. So to give you a understanding of our revenue structure and our revenue stream, our total revenue sources for FY 2425 are roughly about $194.9 million. And that's broken up in five different areas. The first area, and the largest area, are state funds, which are about $109.9 million, and that's 56% of our budget. Next, you will see state sales taxes, we just talked about. It's estimated to be about $19.1 million, which is 10% of our budget. Local funds encompass 33% of our budget, and that number is flat at the FY 202324 number. We also have other funds, which are miscellaneous funds, rents, other miscellaneous funds that the schools receive at about $1.6 million. And then, lastly, federal funds, which encompass federal impact aid money as well as funding we get for JRTC at $650,000. In total, it is about roughly a $4.6 million increase. Much of that coming from state funds, of 4.4 of that is state funds. And with that, I will turn this over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. As I shared with the board last week, it will be the most aggressive estimate of needs that I've brought before you in my nine years as superintendent. There are great needs, and we will need more local support than we have requested in the past. The reason for this are many, and I will detail them more in our time together tonight. But ultimately, what you will see here is what we have reached, a critical mass in a number of areas of such as staffing that need to take immediate action regarding compensation. My estimate of needs is in three main components. Instructional program and development, ongoing security and operational improvements, staff recruitment, and retention needs. Let us begin with the instructional program and development. As part of our strategic plan Expedition 2025, Purpose, Promise, and Success, we're committed to providing educational opportunities to ensure all students achieve high academic growth. As such, I've included in this year's budget supports for ongoing academic offerings as well as necessary additions to launch in-demand programs for today's learners. That is what you will see here. One CTE Administrator. As you know, we're hard at work to renovate our former DAC Center to be a comprehensive career and technical education center. We will need a dedicated administrator to supervise and manage that building and the staff and programs. Three language immersion teachers and instructional assistants. We are launching our dual-language immersion program this school year, which has been a board priority over the past three years. As presently, as presented previously, this will require an additional three teachers and three instructional assistants. Two full-time Starbase teachers to support the ongoing work of our Starbase partnership, including the expansion with our CTE strands. I'm recommending upgrading the two current part-time staff, Starbase staff members, to two full-time teachers. Science program specialists to provide assistance to our science teaching teams in support of our SOL performance. The Department of Curriculum and Instruction needs one additional specialist for this division. Gifted resource teachers. We have a thriving gifted education program, and we need to increase those numbers with the, with the number of gifted resource teachers by two to help meet the unique needs of our gifted learners throughout the division. Elementary social studies coordinator. Since 2023, we've worked to create an elementary and secondary model in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. This is the last piece of that model, as social studies office has only one coordinator currently. 504 program specialists. Seeing an increase in 504 cases throughout the division, the position would be charged with ensuring we are effectively meeting the educational needs and accommodations of students with disabilities in accordance with the Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. Elementary short-term suspension instructional assistants. We're also seeing increases in behavior such as at the elementary level that are requiring out-of-school placements, including both short-term and long-term. For the short-term placement, we're working with an outside partner to house students who are out of school for up to 10 days to continue instruction. As such, this program would require three full-time staff members to deliver meaningful instruction and not lose those days due to absenteeism. Elementary long-term suspension teachers. Elementary long-term suspension teacher and two instructional assistants. Similarly, we're looking to develop within the division a site where students who are long-term can be placed in, out of, in school, out-of-school suspension, but in an in-school atmosphere that can report to receive instruction. In order to support learning, we will need one teacher and two teacher assistants. One senior supervisor for performing arts. I'm recommending a new senior supervisor for performing arts to this year's budget in order to help meet the demands of both elementary and secondary music, theater, and dance programs. This will also help coordinate local, regional, and national student performances. Four speech and language pathologists. The school division currently has 17 speech language, speech and language pathologists to assist our students with special needs. We're seeing continued growth in students requiring speech services, which is why I'm requesting an additional, four more positions to this office. Two middle school math coaches. Finally, Craddock Middle School is the only one of our middle schools to have a math coach. In an effort to support math instruction in our remaining two middle schools, I'm recommending two more math coaches. These positions would have an estimate cost of $2.29 million. State mandates. Also regarding instructional needs, I do need to point out there are some additions to our general fund this year due to state requirements. Reading coaches. We have six reading coach positions added to the general fund. As the state determined that this year Title I funds can no longer pay for these roles since they are now a standard, now they're standard mandated as classified SOQ positions. Testing analysis. We have 13 testing analysis positions added to the state. As the state has told us that, school counselors, as you all have known in the past, who have served as the testing coordinators, can no longer do that, so which requires us to seek 13 additional positions as testing analysts to satisfy that, that practice. ESL teachers. We've added two English second language teachers in order to remain in compliance with the state staffing requirement for ESL students. Those positions have an estimated cost of $2.2 million. Next, I will talk about our ongoing security and operational improvement. Just as our strategic plan outlines our commitment to high academic growth, it also has a goal five, which states that we will ensure high-quality school facilities, specifically that they will be safe and inviting places for students, families, staff, and community. We've been diligent in our safety and security efforts, including this year as we've installed weapons detection systems at all of our elementary schools, preschool centers, and administrative buildings so that the division has comprehensive screening sources. However, we must continue to update and modernize our security plans to ensure that we're in alignment with the best safety practices and staffing models to support a safe learning environment. As such, this year, I'm recommending the follow of school safety addition. School security officer position. I'm recommending an increase in the contract term for all of our school, school division and school security officers from a 10-month to a 10-plus-one, which will help us ensure we have security on-site during high-traffic times ahead of the school start for enrollment of open houses back to school tonight. 10-plus-one, basically what I'm asking for is an additional, additional month. So sometimes let's use this two weeks after or two weeks prior to school. Fuchsia's camera system. We're investing in the Fuchsia's camera system throughout our facilities. This was done in consultation with the Portsmouth Police Department as they have deployed this system throughout the city and will allow foreseenous integration for their use. This will both streamline responses, response times for incidents and help make investigations more efficient. Athletic security funding increase, $125,000 that will be dedicated to security for athletic and after-school events. These security upgrades carry a total of $935,000. Of course, our security infrastructure is one part of the ongoing operations at schools. From our auxiliary services and technology, we've identified these additional needs for the upcoming year. Three additional full-time custodians, one dedicated for each preschool center, a full-time dispatcher for transportation services, additional support for building maintenance services, network penetration testing for cybersecurity threats, an automated workflow dashboard to track email and data, email and phone data. We also have a host of upgrades to our technology systems to continue to support the division. These infrastructure costs will be estimated to be $1.48 million. I will end tonight with what I started my budget planning for this year. Staff recruitment, retention, and retention. This is not a new endeavor. Again, I want to point to our strategic plan, which has a goal three, to recruit, develop, and retain highly qualified personnel to support student learning and employee engagement. Since before the start of the school year, I've highlighted employee pay, specifically teacher pay, as a desperate need for our division. I want to take this opportunity, again, to share more context on this so our public understands why this has remained our long-term priority. For so long, we've worked within our budget in order to stay as competitive as possible with our regional division regarding compensation. We have mainly done this through annual raises, but no step increases to our salary scale. One last step increase came in my first budget recommendation year, which went into effect eight years ago in 2016. This is what led to pay compression for veteran teachers because all employees receive the same raises. Those within additional years of service or experience are not compensated for their time and expertise. Let me show you what that looks like on a current teacher pay scale. Our first step in the salary scale is now zero to six step. This means that a brand-new teacher with no experience in a classroom is making as much as a teacher returning to us with six years of experience. Meanwhile, other divisions who have narrow steps can allow for more differentiated scales and can offer five, six, seven, seven-year veteran salaries that are thousands more than we can. To complicate matters, as you can see, the difference between a teacher with no experience and one with 15 years of experience is just $3,970.05. Now, I also want to say that, I also want to say specific to teachers that our administrative teams have gone to great lengths through phenomenal efforts to find short-term solutions to keep instruction going in classrooms as well as keeping our students supported as possible. For example, despite the ongoing proactive efforts in our human resources team and their recruitment work, we have not been able to fully staff our teaching positions. Currently, we have 825 full-time teachers, full-time classroom teachers. To fill vacancies, we have contracted additional staff, about four dozen in-person teachers, another dozen virtual teachers. We have 89 long-term substitutes who serve as instructional facilitators in the classroom. Still, we have gaps. This year alone, we have had more than 300 teachers who have covered classrooms on a day-by-day basis or by taking, taking on additional blocks as part, as part of their teaching schedule, meaning they lose a planning block in order to provide instruction to our students. Whenever we have the opportunity, we've always told our staff members how much we appreciate them. We tell them with our words. We've launched our entire Shining Light Award initiative this year to spotlight our staff. We give them time whenever we can, such as two full weeks for winter break or the two instructional days off when they don't need, when we don't need them for weather makeup. We've given retention bonuses when we have funds available, one such bonus we've already issued this year. However, we've reached the point where we now, now that those gestures ring hollow. As we've shared publicly, we contracted with a research firm to help us break down comparable salary data for neighboring and similarly sized divisions in the state. They're also working with us on how to build new pay scales that will provide a better reflection of compensation based on years of experience. I had every intention to include that in my estimate of needs, the cost of the first implementation of this firm's recommendation to adjust teacher pay on these new scales. However, in our continued discussions with the firm and ongoing reviews in the data, it became clear that this would be premature. I simply cannot in good conscience rush solutions that will have reason to believe that it was not ultimately fully, it wouldn't fully prepare our compensation issues. After speaking with staff, the firm, and board leaders, I am recommending a different pathway. We will allow the firm to complete its comprehensive recommendations for all employee groups and pay scales throughout the end of, the end of this year and ahead of, ahead of the 24, 25 school year. Based on our preliminary review, it is estimated this cost will be upwards of tens of millions of dollars. From there, I will come back next year to provide those recommendations to you and request, request the support of that plan. So you may be asking, where does, where does that leave our teachers and staff for this year? Well, this is, this is a change in how we're moving forward. It's not a retreat from my plan to address compensation. I'm recommending a pay raise for, a 7% pay raise for all PPS employees. This is the largest raise that I've proposed during my, my near-decade-long tenure here in Portsmouth, and this recommendation ties the highest, highest raised recommendation in the region. All other divisions are recommending somewhere in the 2% to 3% range. As Mr. Falk shared, we did not see the level of support in the governor's budget that we were expecting in the first year of a bionium. Specifically, there was no money allocated for, for teacher or, or other staff. However, there are proposals from the General Assembly to provide some funds, but we have no guarantees of that. As such, I'm estimating a cost of 7% raise as $10.25 million. Let me also point out, this cost is higher due to the compounded impact of the state-mandated mid-year 2% raise that was given in January to all employees. We took care of that increase in-house, unlike other divisions. They asked for additional, they, we asked for no additional funds from you or city leadership to develop this on time. Undoubtedly, this is the biggest price tag item in my estimate of needs. However, it is not only my recommendation regarding compensation, I also believe that there's more we can do to address the ongoing retention efforts. Also included in my proposal tonight is restructuring of roughly 20 division-level positions that better align with current K-12 division structures and titles. Not only do these changes best reflect the work that's being produced from these roles, it also addresses salary gaps in comparisons to other school divisions. We're fortunate to have an incredible, incredible instructional assistants who work for our division and would be perfect candidates for teachers if they had access to a licensure program. This year's budget recommendation includes funds for a Grow Your Own program. That would include increased pay for IAs who work to complete their licensure and can work as a full-time teacher for us once their programs are completed. Next year, our HR department will also continue to recruit, continue recruiting initiatives that were successful for us this year, including continued contracting with international recruiters as well as new teacher signing bonuses. These needs have an estimated cost of $2.6 million. All total on the screen, in order to lead all of the- All total on the screen, in order to lead all the, all the needs outlined in this proposal, we will require 15.1 million. Again, this is based on what's currently in the governor's budget. This number can change based on further action by the General Assembly. That said, before we stand by this request, I share with you from the beginning that this proposal is aggressive, however, I believe it is appropriate. We've had a theme this year, building bridges, reimagining possibilities, a new era of excellence. I challenge our leaders and our staff to answer this call to excellence, not allowing obstacles to stand in our way of our students' success, but finding a creative solution to reach higher goals. Now, I'm issuing that same call to you. We are at an important crossroads in our division where the right investment at this crucial time. We have the tools to build an enduring pathway to excellence, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight, and I look forward to addressing any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Thank you, Mr. Falk. To my colleagues on council, do you have any questions at this time? Doctor Whitaker?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, for the presentation and to all of the school board members present. Mr. Falk, this, this question centers around this local composite index issue. And I noticed in your presentation, you mentioned that there's some uncertainty with how much the state, the governor's budget is going to provide, yet the composite index went down, which would be an indication that the state is going to give more, but we are uncertain about that. My, my concern beyond this budget goes to this composite issue in regards to the casino revenue, which, which I know that this isn't, this composite index is not reflecting the expectation of revenue from the casino. With this aggressive request, which is more than due, how, how would that now, the casino revenue, come into play with this composite index? Because if all of these projections and excitement around the amount we're getting from the casino, the revenue, then that means this composite index is going to increase, which means there's going to be a greater burden on the locality. So if, if we're looking at this as being a regress, aggressive request, what is, what is the projection for what may come with the additional revenue from the casino?
Yes, sir. So in looking at the local composite index, one of the few areas that you look at, you look at the true taxable value of property, you also look at taxable resale sale. So if you look, if you look at the casino and there's more revenue coming to the locality in the city of Portsmouth from the casino, in the future, we would assume that that means that the local composite index would be affected, which means it probably will rise, which would mean, in simplistic terms, less funding from the state. So as, as, the more your economy grows, the inverse happens with, with the local composite index. You would then have a larger ability to pay and less money would come to schools based on that.
And presently, there, there isn't any type of agreement or policy that directs how much of that revenue from the casino is earmarked for the schools?
No, sir.
Right, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Dr. Patillo, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk, thank you for the presentation and bringing this to us. I know that this is aggressive, but I know that everything else is changing, so your needs have to change as well. On the instructional programming development page that we're looking at with all the new positions that we've proposed, is anyway, I mean, I, I see that it's a 2, 2.3 million-dollar request, but is there a breakdown so that we could see what some of those positions are, like the Starbase teachers versus the Gifted Resource teachers and the middle school teachers? Where would those coaches be? They would float around to all of the schools that are out there?
Yes. Who did you click that?
Yes, it is. So just, just wondering, you know, what it would cost for the Starbase teachers versus the Gifted Resource teachers and then the math coaches?
Well, when we look at the, I'll give you an example. So when we look at the Starbase teachers, basically, we look at the, the average salary of a current teacher. So we look at that, we look at that salary and benefits, and that's how we come up with the estimate to get to that number. Same thing with the, the speech and the four speech and language pathologists, you know, currently of the 17 that we have, some are contracted, some are PPS. So we look at the average of those that, that we employ and we try to come up with the amount, the four that we're asking for.
And they're all new teachers, so it wouldn't be somebody who...
Oh, you need, you need, you want a, you want a specific number?
Yeah, that's what I, I was thinking like...
Oh, well, yeah, that's something we can, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Just to give you an average.
And they're all not new teachers, it wouldn't be somebody who is already in matriculating as a teacher who would come out of there and go to a Starbase teacher?
It could be, it could be one of ours that is hired for that.
Okay.
Correct. But usually, and we're talking about Starbase, it wouldn't be a first-year teacher.
I guess that's what I was getting at, because I know that starts at the rate that you showed on the screen.
We would need an experienced teacher to come in, to go in there, to provide the level of instruction that we would expect at that program. So we'll get that for you.
Yeah. And then my last question is, where, where in the city are the suspension instructional assistants, where are they housed?
Currently, currently everyone, all of the students are at New Direction.
Okay.
And what we, what we figured, what we've come to realize is that we can't, we can't, it's not the best environment to have elementary students at the same site with secondary students for out-of-school, out-of-school suspensions. Something happened to get them there, you know, so these are students that have made some decisions that wasn't in the best way, but being that it's required them to be placed in a outside environment, you want to keep that number small. So what we're, what we're proposing with both the short term and the long term is we're in the process now of, of looking for facilities that will host the short-term suspension as well as the long-term. All of these are for, for elementarys. Now, with the elementary in-school and out-of-school, we know that if you're, if long-term suspension, one of the things that we're dealing with now is absenteeism. That's affecting our accreditation model. So you're hearing a lot about chronic absenteeism, students not going to school, parents not forcing them or encouraging them to go to school. So we, we take the deal for that. So what we want to do, we want to at least be able to have staff in front of them so that, so that it will be, as the term that the video uses, meaningful engagement, so that they can still be counted as present, that time can be recovered because you're receiving instruction. So we're in the, we're in the process now of identifying where all of these places will be. So that's where we are at this particular time.
And I thought that was my last question, but you said something that made me think of something else. And as a liaison, working with our sheriff and our Hampton Roads Regional Jail, we're looking for a detention center for our juveniles who have those, those issues and are being detained out of state. Is that number factored into your ADM daily, those juveniles who have to be escorted to Winchester or Tennessee someplace for their juvenile issues? So I guess, so the juveniles that get charged with a crime and our sheriff are having to take them out of, out of state or five hours away to be housed, are youth detention centers, are those numbers in, counted in?
So normally, what happens with that, and I'll use what happened when our youths were in Chesapeake, the juvenile justice center would do a report to the state and those students would then be added back to the ADM for the locality that is what they call responsible for them. So that's normally how it has happened in the past. I would assume it would happen in the same way when, wherever the juveniles will be housed would be done.
Okay.
And if I could just add, the program they're referring to, if you may recall, over 10 years ago, Senator John Joanna was able to fund a program for Grove called Strive, and that was an out-of-school suspension program. So the students that were suspended, they would actually come to Grove to receive instruction and peer mentoring and counseling services while they're out of school until they return to school. So it would be similar to that, but that grant was taken out of the budget and never returned. So we're trying to find funding at the local level to try to make that program happen again.
Thank you.
Councilman Hugo?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Chairman Patillo, school board members, Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk, thanks for the presentation tonight. A couple of questions. Can you remind me what percentage of our positions are SOQ-funded, roughly?
Roughly about 50%.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking, about half. And I, I know the General Assembly isn't done fiddling with the budget, but I think you all said at the work session the other night that the discussion has been in the 3% to 4% range. So if, let's assume worst case that they come through with 3%. Have you done the math to know what additional state funding that would translate to? How much more money would we get from the state?
In the House budget right now, they have a 3.375% raise included. That would result in about $2.8 million in revenue. The Senate budget has a 3% raise, however, it doesn't start until October 1st, and that has a price tag of revenue of about $1.9 million.
Okay, thank you.
At the current time, for the estimates we've seen.
Yeah.
Obviously, as they go to conference, everything could change.
Okay. So, so one of the school board members mentioned during the work session the other night that, that rather than doing a straight-across-the-board 7% pay raise, you might take a look at the step increases and, and use pay raise money to help solve the pay compression issue. And I, I want to pile on, I think that that's a really good idea. It's clear from the, from the step ladder that you had there that, that your most experienced teachers are, are not being recognized for their experience. So, so I, I hope you consider that when you make the final decision. I sent you notes this afternoon about CIP projects, so, you know, we talked at the school board liaison meeting about the K through 8 school and, and I spoke with the city manager and her budget director about kind of figuring out where in the debt picture the, the funding would, would potentially come available to support that big project. I wonder for the upcoming budget year, what smaller CIP projects are you intending to, to execute? And, and whether you've had the discussions with, with the manager and her team about integrating those into the city's picture?
I know this, that my office with Dr. Simmons and Auxiliary Services, they have monthly meetings with, with Mr. Wright in terms of those, those CIP projects. So the specifics of those, I don't have those in front of me to know exactly what those are, but they are having ongoing discussions in reference to our CIP and projects that we have. I think you mentioned something else about the ESSR fund?
Right.
Yeah. They're working with them to make sure that we expended all of that money before September of this year.
Yeah.
So we're working to take care of all of those CIP initiatives that are identified in that, in that pot as well.
And, and then for the manager, so this comes back to you, right? How are we doing with fitting this, the school CIP in with, with the rest of the city CIP? Are we, we...
So I'm not able to...
I, I know we can't get into detail, but...
...respond to that, right? But I will, I'm taking everything that has been requested under consideration to bring back to council on how we can address those issues.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Question that, just, just to bring a little clarity to what Councilman Hugo mentioned as far as what a school board member mentioned about spreading that compression increase over a series of years. What, what was presented tonight, that 7%, does that already take into account an estimate of what that initial compression would have looked like versus this being, not being the total of a compression?
Yes. And that's, that adds another piece to it as well, Dr. Whitaker. What the compression, if the firm was able to meet the deadline, what that would have done would have broken everything out on the teacher's side. What wouldn't have occurred was the other staff. So being that we didn't have that prepared at this time, we wanted to make sure that we did something for, for all staff. And that's when, you know, I made the recommendation for the 7% salary increase across the board. One of the things that, that I shared at our, at our last meeting when I presented this, this proposal to the school board was that we're requesting 7% for all. So at the end of, so when they're done with their report and we make this presentation next year, the 7% if approved would also be, would already be included into any proposal that the firm makes. You know, the additional funds, they will use that to offset and balance the scale with the teachers. So for an example, let's say that the firm got the report back to us in time to share with the board and go over with staff. We'd be looking at a large number. Mr. Hugo, we've talked about that in the liaison.
Right.
So let's say it was, let's say it was 30 million. Now, I wouldn't come back to you in good faith and even talk with the school board and say, hey, we need 30 million this year. You know, other divisions have done this, Norfolk most recently, and they've looked at a span of how they've allocated over, they did a two- or three-year period where they've done that. So if it was 30%, who knows what that first percentage was? Maybe they, I'm sure they divided it in half. So this is just a step towards the big picture that we want to see to try to help the teachers meet, meet that particular scale. You know, I was just trying to look at it to see what the increases would be, you know, with the 7%. And 7% is basically what they got this past year because we started the year with 5% and then the state gave a 2% in January. So technically, you know, there was a 7%, but actually, it was more of a 6% because of when they implemented it. So I just wanted to keep them on that trajectory to get to a point that they realize that, hey, we're serious about this issue. You know, I heard them loud, I heard the teachers and staff loud and clear last year when we had teachers who were basically crying. They didn't want to leave, but they couldn't, they couldn't afford not to take a $10,000 increase in other divisions. And, and we got that. So that's why, you know, we did the RFP to get this firm to, to provide a comprehensive pay compensation plan for us.
So the, so the 7% is actually already taken into account what a possible compression study would have recommended as far as a spread that you would have done?
Yes, that would already be included. You know, whatever the big pot of money is that they said that we need based on our staff, and it, and it's based on, and the thing about the, the pay plan that the firm is doing, you have to look at it by each teacher because everybody is at a, everybody is going to be at a different step when you break this, when you break everything out. So you'll take all of that and what we have in our current budget and spread that out based on what the proposal will be after they looked at everyone's individual salaries to see what that number would be. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Bracy, I did have a couple of questions. First of all, I would like to commend the board and yourself and Mr. Falk for taking this step, you know, so many years as you had indicated. I can remember some years ago that a, that a group of individuals did a study to look at, um, it was through the, the Left Call Alumni Association, and that might have been when you first came on board, when they did a study, compression study, and it came out that the final result was that, that our teachers weren't being paid a competitive rate, and it was raised at that time. Hence, you've almost been here a decade and you've seen this compression, which I think is, I, I'm really looking forward to getting the results from the compensation study. So based on what you guys have understood, you believe the seven percent, and everybody believes the seven percent, will at least make us competitive this, this, this go-round in terms of, because as we know, the teachers are going to be renewing contracts and things like that. So it will at least make us competitive for the, for the next school year. Is that what your thoughts are?
I think it will because if you look at it, most of the other divisions are only looking at a two or three percent increase.
Right.
So if we're looking at a seven, you know, at least they can, they see that, hey, they are trying to address this issue, and they know why we're not able to look at it with the big picture because of the, the study not being done. You know, we communicated that-
Sure.
...the night after the meeting to, to make them aware and that we were requesting and recommending a seven percent increase, so that helped, that will help. You know, we've received some feedback from some of the teachers, you know, just being appreciative of us at least making the request for a seven percent to try to get there until we can do something for them by way of the, the plan. And one of the things that the board, um, usually does and recommends, you know, they were okay with the plan to address the teachers, but ultimately, they would like to see what we do for one. They've always said we want to do for all.
Well, you all have been consistent in that way.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, that's been a fact, and so I just want to say, uh, that I appreciate the work that you all put in. This is a good step in the right direction for sure, and, look, we want our people to be paid competitively for the job that they do, and we appreciate the job that they do for making, for making our children the best that they can be. So thank you all for the work you put in.
Yeah, and Mayor Glover, to, to your point with that, you know, we, at the end of the year, we're always, um, judged by the numbers as far as accreditation, and, you know, you can equate this to whatever your favorite sports team is. You know, if you, you gotta have the best players in order to try to get to the championship.
For sure.
So I'm looking at that, we're looking at that as, we gotta have the best teachers. And if you want to get the best teachers, you gotta be attractive. And the only way you can recruit them, you gotta have something for them. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be attractive, and we're trying to attract and retain the best possible teachers and staff that we can find.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Dr. Bracy and, uh, Mr. Falk, and Dr. Patillo, just want to thank you all for your time and that you've put into this budget and for your leadership, um, gathering this information for us. The budget request, I wouldn't call it aggressive, I would call it needed. Um, I think it is definitely, um, I think schools are overdue, um, for a increase in the budget. Um, and of course, you know, we're going to hear some naysayers throughout the budget season that, you know, going to say, well, show me school performance. But I personally believe that that's why you need these things, um, to make sure that our kids are competitive and to help to bridge that gap. And I'm hoping, um, that my council colleagues will agree with that, um, as we further deliberate on these issues. Speaking about CIP, I was really hoping to have more of a conversation about CIP in the presentation. Um, I know we've talked about the K-8 school, um, which I'm sure those numbers are outdated from when that was originally bought up at 63 million, it's probably 80, 90 million, if not knocking on 100 million. Um, but, you know, having those conversations are needed. Since I've been on city council, I've been urging council to have meetings with school board on a quarterly basis. Uh, myself and Councilman Hugel, we meet with, um, you, Mr. Falk, Ms. Schumake, and, uh, Ms. Hines on a monthly basis, and I think those conversations have been productive, but they could be a whole lot more productive, um, especially with cooperation from both parties. Also, when we speak about the CIP strategy plan, um, I really think we need to have a serious conversation about that. You know, you all come into us once a year saying you all need a project, and us having to shuffle for the money, it shouldn't be done that way. And I really think that we together should come together with a plan on how we can address, uh, not only a new building, but the renovations and rehab of your current buildings. Um, we know that, for example, Churchland Elementary is probably, what, 60 years old, maybe? Or knocking on the door of it. Um, you know, there's a lot of issues that you all have that we should be doing a better job at. And so to have that conversation tied into casino revenue formula funding, um, and how we can take a portion of our casino revenue funding to help pay for CIP. Um, we understand that while the school division may not be able to manage a CIP fund, there should be the ability for the school board to have the money there so that when it's needed, you all can come to us and get it. It shouldn't be a, an issue. Um, so we would like for council to have those conversations with, uh, the school board to find out what the common ground on that is, and then also coming up with an agreement, um, possibly an MOU. While I understand that council cannot bind another council to an agreement, it shows a good faith effort. Um, and having to have you all beg us every year for additional money, um, it just, it is ridiculous. Um, and it's not just the dynamics of this council, but also previous school boards and previous, um, councils as well. So I think council colleagues, I really encourage to have those conversations on how we can, um, better plan our school, uh, conversations and budgets with our, uh, school board colleagues and keep them in the loop, because at the end of the day, the seven of us have a lot of agreement when it comes to education. Um, and I do think that, um, most of us anyway, at least the majority of us have ran on education and increasing education. And, um, I think now more than ever, our school division needs us, um, and also with this casino revenue now that we have coming in, I mean, it's a great time to really, for us to be able to put our money where our mouth is, and that is really to increase the likelihood and afford opportunities to our children. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any other questions? Any school board members, do you all have anything you want to add?
I do.
Dr. Whitaker.
Well, um, thank you for having us. As, um, Mr. Tillage mentioned, casino revenue can, is there anyone from the city that can tell us, um, how much the city's revenue has increased as a result of the casino profits? What's, what's the number?
So I, I really don't have that information in front. I know we responded to school, to council and provided that information, but, um, I can send you a report to Mr. Falk, uh, on the breakdown of what that is.
Okay. So there's no, like, there's no estimate you could give us tonight?
I don't want to, I'll just speak out of terms.
Okay.
So I would prefer to provide that information.
All right. And my, my second point is that I agree with Mr. Tillage that, um, at some point we do need to sit down and come up with some type of agreement in relationship to what percentage of that casino revenue is going to go to the schools, because the casino was promised, um, not only as just a source of revenue for the city, but as a means of funding our schools in terms of the things that we really need. Um, and so I think that's a conversation that we do need to have as a board and a city council. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments or questions? Well, once again, on behalf of the city, we certainly appreciate everyone coming together tonight to have this conversation. We will convene and talk about the things that were mentioned. For example, I, I am in agreement with, with us as a council meeting more frequently, and I think we've said that to Dr. Bracy and Dr. Patillo, so we can figure out how that's going to occur. Maybe spend a whole day together, right? Um, I don't know, or a half a day, perhaps. Perhaps, I'm just throwing it out there. Half a day, half a day. A half a day. Perhaps spending a half a day to really kind of hash out these particular areas of concern that we can really get input from everybody to make us all aware, but to move in a more deliberate and intentional direction. So we have talked about that, and I will share that with my colleagues, and we will get back to you with some type of schedule, because I believe the more we get together and share, it makes us better as, as a team. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So, um, I think you, you guys are aware of, of me being a supporter of the school board. Um, so you know I'm going to be supportive of this that you're, um, asking for. Um, that, that all-day meeting or half-day meeting, I'm probably not going to be there, but just know that I support y'all. But, um, ju- just remember that it's, it's important that, um, as a council, that we support this school system because our kids, we say this all the time, our kids are our future. Well, like you said, this is an aggressive ask. To me, it's not aggressive, it's long overdue. Um, I, I will want them to, I, I hope this is everything that they need. I hope what you guys ask for is all the money that you need, um, when you come back for the step pay. Um, I'm going to be in support of that too, because we definitely need to make sure that we have our team together so that we can win this championship for our kids. Um, that is very important, but remember, guys, I think only three of us have 100% record of fully funding this educational system all the time, but everybody ran on this, including all you guys that haven't done it. Please make sure that you do this, because it is an election in November, and you can, you can run off of fully funding our school system. So I think that's going to be, um, an easy ask, you guys. So when you leave, you can sleep easy tonight, knowing that you're going to get that 15 million.
Nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty million.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's been a pleasure to be around this table again for, um, seven, eight, nine years now. I think there was a couple of years where we may not have done it, um, but it's, it's a pleasure to be here with you all, and thank you for having us. Um, and I just want to say, you know, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk and the school division, um, over the past five, four, five years, we've done our due diligence with putting our money where our mouth is and not asking city council for significant increases in our budget. Um, we've been able to take care of projects through grant money, through, uh, end-of-year funds, through picking and choosing where we put our money, and, uh, I think the ask is justified, especially at the expense of our teachers. Our teachers have borne the brunt of this, um, and earlier we were talking about teachers that leave and wanting to retain those teachers that ha, that are the most seniority. Uh, one of my best friends was in tears because she had to leave, because we're talking, that's $18,000 to go from one city to another, and that's a teacher with 20, 22 years of experience like myself. So, um, this seven percent raise will, will eat into some of that pay and compression, but it has been 20 years since the school system has done a pay and compression study. So I just want to put everything into perspective. The past few raises that we've done, we've been able to shuffle within our budget to make it happen. So I'm appreciative that we've been able to make it happen within our own house, um, but we've got to start, uh, putting our teachers first and getting them where they need to be so we can retain those teachers that have the experience, that have the love of Portsmouth, um, so that they can stay and still be viable. So thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Any other questions, comments for the good of the order? Seeing now, once again, thank you all, and thank you for your job that you do every day. This meeting is adjourned.